Board, it's kind of interesting about all of the schools with their success. It kind of narrowed it down. Relationship and helping kids. Not necessarily teaching, helping kids and relationships. I thought they did a well of a job. Are we ready for pictures?
Yeah, I think we're ready for pictures. Thanks to all of the schools who came today and presented to us and the students who were able to come along. We really appreciate you taking your time out and what hard work you've done in your buildings to really make those connections with the students and help. It's back to that vision of the State Board, the success of each child, and you're really doing that. So we really appreciate that. We do have pictures we'd like to take. We have a certificate to give you and pictures we'd like to take, so we're going to do that. I think we're going to start with Holy Rosary first.
You're going to start with him first? All right, Holy Rosary.
Well, pretty exciting to have those Blue Ribboned Schools here. I don't know if you guys can top that or not. That's a tough act to follow. This afternoon, we are pleased to have our Blue Ribbon Task Force on Bullying, and actually, they will be submitting their final report to us. So again, that's in your packet, Board members, if you haven't already gotten that out. And Kent Reed in the department is going to introduce our two co-chairs today, so welcome, Kent.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, for your support and leadership in addressing bullying in Kansas schools. And thank you, Dr. Watson, for commissioning the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Bullying in April. As a result of the expertise and commitment of our members and the collective genius of our co-chairs, we present to you today the most definitive study ever undertaken on bullying in Kansas schools. And to tell us about it are our co-chairs. Please welcome Dr. Rick Ginsburg and Mr. James Regier.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming today.
Absolutely, and it comes as no surprise that those schools who went before us spoke about school environment, and that's just a big part of what this is all about as well. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to join you today to share the work of our task force. In April of 2019, Kansas Commissioner of Education Randy Watson appointed a Blue Ribbon Task Force to examine issues of bullying in the state schools and report recommendations to the State Board of Education in December of 19. Over the past nine months, the task force was guided by these agreed-upon objectives and goals: research and identifying current bullying definitions, trends, incidents, and prevention measures occurring across the state; coordinate with stakeholders to address relevant issues effectively to best meet the needs of students; review work in the areas of social and emotional learning as set forth by the State Board goals; identifying possible avenues that could reduce and prevent bullying and cyberbullying; review current statutes, regulations, and policy to determine need for change; and lastly, present recommendations to the Kansas Board of Education to address bullying, cyberbullying, prevention, and training measures. The task force first met on April 25 in Topeka. Subsequent public meetings were held at Clearwater, Garden City, Salina, Gerard, Wichita, Lawrence, and Topeka. On November 19, a webinar was conducted in cooperation with KNEA to receive additional public comment focusing on teachers who were unable to attend meetings scheduled during school hours. Our task force included 35-plus members, plus staff, 35 members plus staff. Members of the task force served on six working committees researching the following topics: data and research, evidence-based and current practices, cultural awareness, policy, regulation, accountability, barriers and solutions, and writing. According to the 2018 Kansas Communities That Care Survey, over 55% of sixth graders, 63% of eighth graders, 60% of 10th graders, and 59% of 12th graders reported that they had seen someone bullied during the school year. Over 27% of students reported that they had been bullied during the school year. Nearly 18% of students who reported being bullied in 2018 reported that they were cyberbullied. This slide simply shares the current Kansas definition of bullying. We do address that to some degree in our report. Current statutory requirements: the Board of Education of each school district shall adopt a policy to prohibit bullying; the Board of Education of each school district shall adopt and implement a plan to address bullying; the Board of Education of each district may adopt additional policies related to bullying if they so choose. The task force would like to thank Commissioner Watson for his leadership in establishing anti-bullying as a priority for Kansas schools. I would like to compliment the work of the task force members and the KSDE staff assigned to assist us with this undertaking: Pat Bone, Administrative Specialist; Amy Martin, Senior Administrative Assistant; Myron Melton, Education Program Consultant; and Kent Reed, School Counseling Consultant. These four individuals exemplify servant leadership. We benefited greatly from their assistance. It has been a pleasure to serve with this group of people, along with Co-Chair Dr. Ginsburg, who will now share our recommendations with you.
Thank you. I want to begin by, first of all, thank you for all that you do, and I also want to remark, as James did, about the wonderful support we have from the terrific people at the state. Serving in this made me really proud to be a Kansan. It made me proud because of the great things that I learned that are going on. Made me proud of a task force of individuals who donated their time and energy to doing this, and as we went around the state to hear from so many Kansans about the things that are going on and the ways they wanted to contribute to addressing these problems. So it really was a proud moment for me to be a part of this. I'm going to walk you through the recommendations. We have seven. You have the reports, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. We want to leave time for you to ask questions of us. Our first recommendation indicates that we think there needs to be better support and direction for school districts around bullying. Kansas law, as James mentioned, requires districts to adopt bullying policies and plans to make provisions for training. We think that more direction and support are needed for these efforts. Some clear guidelines for policies and plans, certainly for the plans, needs to be shared. To that end, we think that there should be a standing, a statewide committee or unit of some kind identified, or a committee appointed, to support school districts in the development of these plans and their training. One thing we recommend that they do is put together a bank of promising practices so that they can be shared with districts around the state as to what's working in their particular context. Secondly, we are recommending that we continue to develop the state's focus on social-emotional learning and character development education to address school bullying. In the report, we have a section we call "The Kansas Advantage," and let me tell you, we really are ahead of the game nationally in this, in that we have developed standards on social-emotional learning and character development, and the research is pretty clear that it is these issues and addressing these issues are the things that will address issues around bullying. So our suggestions are the following around that, that we better communicate and share the SEL standards and related supports that are available to school districts in Kansas. There are quite a few. We have listed many of those on the website that is put up on the KSDE website for us. We recommend that the Oversight Committee we identified in Number One be charged with providing information and direction for school districts in how to devise curricula to address the bullying problems in their schools and classrooms. And finally, as you're developing plans, they certainly have to, districts should certainly be paying attention, and school boards, to the standards that the state has set. They really are state-of-the-art nationwide, and I got that from some of the experts who are assisting just about every state in the country. Third, we recommend that you, as the State Board, examine the state law and consider appropriate guidance. The Kansas law is broad and somewhat inconsistent with research on bullying. Research on bullying identifies bullying as something that is repetitive over time and involving a power balance. Our current law says repetitive or pervasive, and one of the concerns that was raised to us by many educators is that people A aren't clear on what bullying is, and that single instances of peer conflict aren't really what bullying is about. So it's something that we hope that you will address. Number four, we recommend that local policies and plans focus on relationships, school climate and culture, and the mental health impact of bullying in schools. Certainly, as James said, the environment in the school is important, not just in addressing bullying, but in improving test scores and student achievement. But bullying is a complex and multi-dimensional phenomenon. It takes place in schools, and it also takes place online through social media and gaming. Different strategies are needed by school level, by age, by age of children, and by different school contexts. Changing school climate and culture takes time and persistence, and is hard. It is hard work. But if you want to positively impact bullying behavior, schools need to focus on culture, on peer and adult and student relationships. So what are some of our recommendations? We recommend that any bullying plan should address the different needs of students and staff identified by research, but not limited to things such as biological sex, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, race and ethnicity, including migrant populations, disability, religious faith, and socioeconomic status. The research identifies that it is indeed these groups that are bullying the most. We recommend, secondly, that the whole school community needs to be involved in policies. And again and again, we heard about the importance of parents and communities and caretakers in addressing bullying. We recommend that students need simple, effective, and we would argue trusted means for reporting bullying behavior. Perhaps we should involve the students in helping us come up with what those might be. Strong school cultures and climates have trust in relationships, and that means that we have to develop ways to listen to students and to families and address their concerns as a beginning point. We recommend that there should be attention paid to issues like training and resiliency for young people in dealing with some of the things that they face in schools. Some of the restorative approaches that are out there that avoid revictimization and build social skills rather than zero tolerance policies are important to consider. Mental health support in schools and in communities is important. We heard from a number of such agencies around the state. They're doing great work. We need them working with us in the schools. Bullying has consequences for the perpetrators, for the targets of bullying, and the bystanders as well. And when we address bullying, we have to recognize that it is all three of these groups that have to have some support. We also recommend that there's a problem of large caseload for counselors and other individuals of mental health capacities working in schools, and that weakens their ability to address problems. The state has already examined some numbers on this. We would recommend ratios of 1 to 250 school counselors and social workers, and 1 to 500, 700 school psychologists in schools. So we have the people in the schools, the mental health teams, to work on these issues. And we also recommend in this larger recommendation that bullying prevention efforts should be tied in with other reforms and mandates, and that's where tying in with the social-emotional learning and character development skills really is a leveraging point for us in addressing this. Our fifth recommendation: the state needs better data on school bullying and measures for assessing program effectiveness. We are really blessed in many ways to have the Kansas Communities That Care Survey available to us in the state. It's ambitious, it's large, and it really is a terrific starting point. It has some issues, though, that need to be addressed. And currently, there is no collectively accepted measures for how to assess bullying or school climate in the state of Kansas. So first, we would recommend that all Kansas districts be encouraged to participate in the KCCTC survey. The Board may want to consider the Student Privacy Act, but to potentially increase participation rates. The survey itself is really long. It's 142 questions. I don't know about you all, but if I'm taking 142-question survey by about 30, I'm ready to go to bed. And imagine what it's like for kids. So we recommend that perhaps this be broken up and administered in parts over the course of a year, with maybe 40 to 50 questions in each administration. We recommend that this survey be given at the same time each year, because the time of administration of a survey affects your ability to have longitudinal data to look at, and when you change the time each year, you may be not looking at the same thing when you're comparing it over time. Here, we're getting a little wonky, and I'm a dean, so I'm allowed to do that. The KCCT survey needs to address its psychometric reliability checks. They were actually developed in the 1970s, and they need to be done periodically to make sure that we have reliable data. We think that the KCCTC survey and the folks that administer this who are aware of it should collect information on the subgroups that we've already identified that are affected by bullying. They know that this is an issue, this is something they should address. And finally, we recommend that they should put whatever the current definition we're using in Kansas, that should be on the survey, so the kids that are responding to it know what it is, what we're referring to, and asking them questions about bullying. We also would recommend that the Oversight Unit we identified in Recommendation One, consider creating surveys regarding teacher perceptions of bullying and perhaps gathering more information around school climate. If climate is king here, then we need information so we can make adjustments along the way. Most bullying programs, and I was contacted by a lot, as one of the co-chairs here, they all claim that they're evidence-based. Well, I asked them to send me that evidence. Most of them didn't have any. When they did send me something, they sent me stuff that was tied to that. We've got to make sure that when the districts are trying things, even the most well-intended things, that they truly are evidence-based. There's a group that the state works with called CASL that is probably the leading national organization on social-emotional learning. They are a great partner to the state. They would be a great partner to us with this, and they have some means for districts to look at things to determine if they are evidence-based. That's just one example of how we might move forward with that. We also recommend that the unit identified in the first recommendation should be responsible for recommending measures that districts might use so they can assess the effectiveness of their bullying policies. It's not simple. These might include things like the number of office referrals, or attendance rates, or in and out of school suspensions, or academic achievement, or other self-report measures. Whatever it is, we should have a common set of metrics so that we know how our programs are working, rather than just testimonials that may come forward. Our sex recommendation is around addressing cyberbullying. This is a tough one, because what happens is a lot of the cyberbullying that takes place happens in the home, and the kids come to school, and it follows them through the schoolhouse gate, and then our school people have to deal with this. So there are not simple answers here. I recommend a book to you all, this is not a part of this I've been reading, called "IGen," like iPhone, by a psychologist out in California named Susan Twenge, who has pointed out how the iPhone and social media has changed the characteristics of this generation in about a three- to five-year time, and it's remarkable how different these kids are than they were just five, six years ago. I have kids in this age cohort. It's remarkable how different they are. Around cyberbullying, provide information regarding the definition and how to avoid becoming victimized. Share information about the district's policies around cyberbullying, and what plans you've put in place, and the expected consequences for engaging in this behavior. Cyberbullying awareness activities are great. There's a number of them going on in districts around the state, school assemblies, software programs, and the like. We think educators and families should be trained with how to work on problems associated with cyberbullying. Perhaps we can find social media apps or other ways for students to report about cyberbullying so this doesn't come to us without a clear blue. Involving students in ways to best mobilize social media makes sense to us as a way to address this problem. And certainly, this was recommended to us. It appears that the federal government is going to pass some laws around cyberbullying, and we have to pay attention to those. None of us knows what they will be, but we have to be aware that they're coming. And finally, I'll end with this, and then open it up for your comments or questions. Training and professional development and teacher preparation all have to be a part of what we do if we're going to take bullying on. Educators certainly have a lot of responsibilities. Teaching and learning are really complex and require a lot of skills. Certainly, as we just learned, academic achievement is really, really important, as is the training of other skills identified in the Kansas CAN Agenda you all have passed. This includes growth on social-emotional learning, but if we're going to implement any program effectively to address bullying, it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take resources, and effective training. So we recommend that schools and districts should set aside ample time and resources to support the training and professional development for any anti-bullying program to be effective. One of the great leaders on change, who studies change, always says, "Let the group change the group." We think educators can do this amongst themselves, but they need the support and the kinds of resources we talked about. We think that addressing bullying will require outside support from the community, different professional programs and the like. We think that, as the research has identified, the most promising practices to impact bullying are those that are school-wide, those that are universal, and those that include a parental component. The good news is that social-emotional learning, one of the goals that we have set for our schools in this school embraces this very set of ideals. So we really do have a great leverage point there. In-service training teachers should be coupled with preparation for staff, families, and others in the schools. And at the same time, pre-service teacher preparation programs, my world, should be addressing bullying as well. And perhaps the State Department can have a hand in helping us identify and sharing best practices there. And finally, emphasize again, this came up in all of our conversations, we need to engage families if we're going to address bullying in any effective way. With that, let me stop and see what questions you might have. James will take the hard ones, and I'll take the softball questions.
Well, first of all, thanks to both of you for co-chairing, and I think you have a number of members of your committee here. If you would stand, please. I've got a few folks back there. And thank you for your work. We appreciate what you have done. Now, this is a lot of hard work, and we know you put a lot of miles on throughout the state, too, as you went out to various locations. And this today is a receive item, so we'll actually be voting on it next month. But before we proceed, I have a question I want to ask Randy, because there is an oversight group that you mentioned several times in here. I kind of think I know where you're probably going with that, but if you'd share your idea for the oversight for this particular group, or this report.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think, Rick, if you go back maybe to, I'm going to find it when you hit it, right there, Recommendation Five. So you talked about that probably needs to be integrated with other things, especially social-emotional, and I think the committee that we established on school mental health that you chair, Madam Chair, would be the appropriate place to oversee this and make sure that things like suicide prevention and other mental health issues are intertwined within the bullying recommendation. So that's where I would recommend that we place that, and it is a permanent committee that can report back to this board.
Okay. Kind of what I thought, but I wanted to ask. Okay, we'll open up for questions. So Ann Maugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amazing piece of work. I get probably as many calls about this as just about anything, so a lot of people are really looking forward to this coming out. The thing about the law that you mentioned, that it was inconsistent and broad, it will always be broad and inconsistent, because as soon as they put it in law, it's outdated. I mean, it's like a lot of things, as you know, it's just moving fast, things change. And I wondered if you guys, for one, had lawmakers on your team. I didn't look through the list, but was there any discussion about just removing it from the law? Because it can't keep up.
We had no discussion about removing it from the law. The two issues that we discussed were that, as compared to research, research consistently says that bullying is repetitive, and it involves a separation of power, and our definition does not include those two things.
Right. But beyond that, I mean, is there any advantage to having it in the law that you guys found?
Well, our concern was that the laws we have, it kind of feeds some of the confusion, where any kind of peer conflict can be defined as pervasive, and therefore, it's labeled as bullying, as opposed to it being repetitive over time and involving a power differential. So our thought was, and this is why we're leaving to people smarter than us, our thought was that you might want to consider this and see if you think that that kind of specificity might add more clarity to the people out in the field.
Okay. Could I ask a couple other questions, Madam Chair?
Yeah, we've got some other folks coming up, so yeah, ask another one.
Okay. The survey, I have the same issues with the survey that you guys had, but my question is, I don't understand the relationship between Greenbush and K-Dads. Who's really in charge of this survey, and who would we go to if we wanted to differentiate it by grade level or shorten it up? And were they on the task force?
So I believe this is commissioned by K-Dads and given to Greenbush to carry out. So I think that...
Okay. They contract with Greenbush?
I believe that's what it is. So my guess is you start on the top, and the folks that presented to us were open to some of the comments that we had. I mean, nothing was a surprise, I think, that we shared with them. Not sure they were thrilled with it, but they were.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jim Porter, and then Ben.
Thank you. Going back to using this slide, the Communities That Care Survey, I noted that there was significant change in the number of students that took the Community Cares survey whenever the, it went from an opt-out to an opt-in. Was any discussion about that made during, and if so, what was the attitude of the legislators on your group related to that?
Well, we discussed it, and we discussed that it was something that was, that the legislature would have to deal with. I don't think any of them had voiced any concerns one way or the other about that.
I do recall hearing one of the legislators mention that she did not think there would be an appetite for that, for that change.
Yeah, and that doesn't surprise me, but it is a detriment to getting the data we need.
Yeah, the people at KCCTC that do the survey mentioned that as well. Now, there has been an uptick in the last couple of administrations, and, you know, look, it takes time away from, you know, that's why one of our thoughts is if it's not 142 questions, which is a lot of time, if it's, you know, four times 35, or whatever that would be, perhaps you would get more people willing to jump in.
I agree, it's way too long, especially for sixth graders, though.
Well, and the renewed interest that you've created in districts with the Kansans CAN Initiative and social-emotional learning has increased interest in this survey from districts across the state. In the old system, where we just measured assessment scores, it really wasn't very relevant to our accreditation.
So the KCCTC survey has seven bullying questions, and if indeed, we're going to get serious with, you know, the appointed committee giving direction to districts on what their plans might look like and how they might assess their plans, having a survey that is, a survey that everybody accepts is reasonable, that everybody were to use, would be a way to assess how you're doing from year to year. So there may be some value to districts to say, you know, there's multiple reasons why we might want to administer this survey.
I want to join my colleagues in thanking you for your excellent work.
Thank you.
Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Mrs. Maugh took my KCCTC question, but I did want to extend my appreciation as somebody who did experience it when he was in a Kansas public school. And I still am very proud of the system I came from. It happened in elementary school, and I don't know if you're a survivor of bullying or whatever it is, and I loved it so much that I decided to get elected. I get called a lot of names, but I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. And this affects everyone. I know we read those demographics, and I sat here and leaned over to Mrs. Clefford, who served on the committee. I said, "They just named every demographic we have in our schools, every single one of them. It affects every single kid." And I'm looking forward to moving the needle on this, and I appreciate the work that you and the committees have done. And I was able to attend the meeting in Salina, and I got to hear some really good things. And I would agree with the mental health piece of it. I had a conversation with a board member this last week in my visit, one of my visits, and he said, "This ties into our mental health piece that we're trying to target in the bigger umbrella." And so this is a big part of that umbrella. So I appreciate the work that you guys have done, and thank you very much.
One of the stark moments for us, I think, on this, on the task force, and my committee members, I think, would agree with this, is we had seven high school students from schools in one district, and the mental health coordinator in the district asked them if they each would respond to the question, "How often do they witness bullying in their school?" Every day, every day, every day, every day, every day, every day, all kids. So I think this is an issue. So I think this is an issue that is in all schools. Now, when we asked them how you define bullying, if they knew the state's definition of bullying, they didn't know what that was.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. An observation and a question. My observation is, Rick, you probably appreciate this, we've overemphasized teacher training to the extent that we rely more on credentials than we do evaluating our teachers. I mean, that's something I try to bring to this table. I'm all in favor of teachers having credentials, obviously, but when we rely on credentials, and we don't say, "Well, this teacher's really good at it, and this teacher really isn't, but we're going to pay them the same." We've got issues to address, and hopefully we'll talk about that tomorrow when we talk about accreditation. My question to you is, you mentioned assessing the climate. You know, how would you, how would you go about assessing the climate? You're talking about a survey, you're talking about just asking parents. Would it be more quantitative, qualitative? Could you, you know, tell me more about how we would assess the climate?
There are psychometrically sound surveys for assessing climate in schools and other kinds of organizations. We didn't talk about this specifically, but I think that's what we had in mind, is that, you know, identify a survey that's short and sweet, but can give you a good picture of the school climate. It likely would be mostly quantitative, perhaps with some qualitative components to it.
I guess my question would be, would it involve the whole community, as you suggest? Or would it be focused with, more within the school, more of a survey of teachers and students?
The ones that are well done involve the whole community.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I would follow up and say that currently, in districts across the state, there are community surveys being given right now. I mean, our district does that, right? So.
Commissioner Watson has a few comments he'd like to make.
Well, this is, I think Kent said it very well. This is a world-class report done by 35 people that volunteered their time and their resources, because we paid them nothing for, other than a hearty thank you and work well done. But when we were, when we knew we needed to address this, as difficult a subject as this is to get your arms around, right? First person I called was James, because I was thinking, I want a superintendent, I want someone that's been a principal, I want someone that has some background in school counseling, been a teacher. And of course, then, not only am I going to lay out all this work that you have to do, but say, and, you know, we're not going to pay you anything, but I really would hope that you would do it. And he never hesitated, said, "I'll be happy to do it." And then I thought, we really need someone engaged in research at the, in deep research. And I thought, you know, Rick's going to know the exact person. So impressed with the work that he does at KU, and so, and I know how busy he is, and I gave him a call, and I said, "You've got to have someone in your department that really understands this work." And I'll never forget, he said, "Would you consider allowing me to do this work?" And I said, "What?" He said, "I would really like to do this work. This is important work, and I would like to be a part of this." That speaks volumes to all of the 35 people that came to this task force with a passion for wanting to do the right work. So Kent, say thank you enough to you two gentlemen.
Yeah, I gotta mention, you did pay my going rate.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, and he did that, K-State or to a KUer, so, you know, I really appreciate that. Kent, Myron, Amy, Pat, they did, they did the behind-the-scenes work and made sure that everyone got what they needed. So thank, thanks to all of you. And this is certainly, like many of the task force, you know, I think sometimes people, we do, you do a task force work, and you just shelve it, but like, you know, the teacher vacancy and supply, this work now gets passed on to someone that will breathe life into this all the time to bring this forward. I just can't thank you enough for the work that all of you have done.
I'd like to extend my thanks also. This is a very well-written report. I think I've told you both that. It's very understandable. Can't always say that about some reports that you get. So really appreciate that. It lays out a lot of good recommendations, and since I'm on the School Mental Health Advisory Council, I kind of think I'll be talking with you guys here pretty soon. So as we think about how to proceed and how to make that transition from the bullying task force to school mental health as far as oversight, and I kind of see it as implementation also. This will come back next month as an action item, and so we'll actually vote on it next month. But we'll proceed, actually, I'm, School Mental Health Advisory Council meets next week, so we will be getting a copy of this document to our council next week and begin some conversations next week already about this. And then we'll begin to have some conversations about how to proceed, and like I say, I know we're going to be working with, with your group and about how we bring the groups back together. So again, thanks so much for your work. Quite a report here, and amazing amount of work from your task force. So thanks, thanks to all involved. So, board members, we're going to take about a 10-minute break. Before we do have our PPC, will be our next agenda item. So we'll take about a 10-minute break. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on item number 12, board members. And this is our Act on Recommendations to the PPC. 12A is denial. And there are two, and this starts on page 29 of your documents on your computer. And Linda, welcome.
Hello there.
We're glad to, glad to see you again this month. So do you want to, to start with these two items? Thank you, Brad.
Sure. Agenda item 12A, it's the recommendation of the Professional Practices Commission that, for case 19-PPC 27 and 30, that licenses be denied. And information is actually there. No one was actually there for a hearing, so these were defaults.
Okay. Board members, any questions on either 27 or 30 for Linda? Ben, question?
No.
May I make a motion? I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Ben, go ahead.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Professional Practices Commission in the denial of 19PPC 27 and 19PPC 30.
Do we have a motion? Second, Dina. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It's a 10-0. Okay, now, the revocations are item 12B.
12B. For case number 31, 32, and 33, the Professional Practice Commission recommends revocation for all of these cases. The first three, the applicant did not request a hearing. And the fourth case, 19-PPC-41, was a condition of a plea agreement. And so the, the license holder in this case surrendered their license.
Okay. Do we have questions for any of these for, that were for a recommendation of revocation? Any questions, board members? Okay, do we have a motion for this one? Dina?
Let me get it back. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Professional Practices Commission in the revocation of 19PPC 31, 19PPC 32, 19PPC 33, and 19PPC 41.
Have a second? Steve? Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, it's 10-0. Linda, thank you very much.
We'll see you in 2020.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 13, which is to accept recommendations following review of at-risk practices as amended in 2019. And Brad is here, and I believe you've got some handouts you've given to us also.
Yes. I will walk you through the handouts once we come up on them.
I know we have the PowerPoint, and what was there? Three others?
Yes, and then there were three handouts.
So PowerPoint, and then three handouts.
There's extra handouts back here. So, thank you. And I also want to thank Kathy and Ann for meeting with our team earlier on walking through legislation. And what I'm going to do is present to you what the legislation says, and it was updated just minor in 2019, how we've incorporated that update into it, and really how we go about ensuring that we are meeting the intent of the law. So for, for clarity, school districts receive state at-risk dollars based on how many students qualify for free lunch. But then how they spend that money is on students that meet what this board has approved more than a decade ago, how we define what an at-risk student is. And I've listed those up there, and you have them in your handouts, but, so, I may have 100 kids qualify for free lunch, which generates awaited funding, but I might be serving 150 kids that meet one or more of these criteria. They're either not working academically at grade level, they're not meeting requirements for promotion, for graduation, they have behavioral issues, chronic absenteeism, I mean, there's a whole host, repeated suspensions, expulsions. So there's a lot that goes in, so it's not just, "I'm behind in reading and math." And there's also a lot of these at-risk criteria that cause students to be behind academically. So this is how we define what an at-risk student is, that receives the supports once the school district receives their at-risk dollars. I might note that there are more students in Kansas identified with at-risk needs than there are students that qualify for free lunch. So, and it's, there's challenges in every district, because you might be in a fluent district that doesn't have a lot of free lunch students, but that doesn't mean you don't have a lot of students with at-risk needs. So it's just, but it's, that's the formula that it's been set up. Yes, Jim?
Would it also be reasonable to assume that school districts are spending more on at-risk programs than they are receiving because of the students?
Yes. So statewide, school districts last year spent about $80 million more than what they received, so it was $80 million more of their general fund that they were spending for those students. So they're not just spending what they receive, they're spending a lot more. And I'm not, I mean, we can provide that data later, I just wanted to share with you what we're doing to ensure that we're meeting the letter of the law. So the intent, when this legislation was written in 2017, and we were involved with the writing of it, is that we wanted to ensure that school districts were spending their state at-risk dollars, not only for those students, but using evidence-based best practices. We also wanted to align it to the federal ESSA requirements, because they also require that schools use evidence-based best practices for their title students. Well, a student that receives title services, those are the same criteria as state at-risk. They're the same kids. So we didn't want school districts having to do one thing for federal dollars, a different thing for state dollars, when both of them together are serving the same kid. So that was the goal and the intent, as we were involved in drafting this, that went into effect in 2018, and then was updated in 2019. So in this statute, it says, "The state board, you shall identify and approve what those evidence-based best practices are." And it also says that you will update it as part of the KISA five-year process. I'm going to show you how we actually update it annually. We don't wait five years. We update it on an annual process. But that's what's written in statute. It also says that school districts will report to you annually how they're using it. And I will share with you how we go about doing that. But first of all, there's, one thing is, we use the website and guidance across the state on how we identify those best practices. I'll show you a sample of how we do that. I'm actually going to take you to the website and show you. You have a copy, I think you've already seen it, you might be familiar, but that's how we go about identifying. The way we go about approving those best practices is through the local consolidated plan, which I'm going to walk you through. It's something that every school district has to submit to us as a requirement under KISA every year, and that's the way we officially approve any evidence-based best practice that they're using. So I've given you a copy as a sample, Wichita's. And I'm going to walk through what is on this that is submitted every July by every school district, that one of our consultants goes through, looks at, they, in this aligns with what the law says. They tell us the number of students meeting at-risk criteria, the number of students they're serving with state at-risk dollars, the types of services being provided, is it in-class instruction, is it before school, is it after school? And a lot of them choose multiple types of services. How were the students identified? Was it through some assessment? Was it through some referral? Was it through discipline, behavioral? But they have to explain to us how those students were identified. What research did the district rely on for selecting programs? Most of them, they will reference that they, they found it on our website. But our website will never be comprehensive. There will be other ways that districts will identify something that is evidence-based, and there's research, and they can submit that. But they've got to show us what it was. What were the results or the effects of providing these services? They list the evidence-based best practices that they are using, and then our consultants will provide comments and feedback. It might be that we would like to have a little more information on this one strategy, or, you know, but there's a way for us to, it's a two-way, and then eventually, we either approve or disapprove all of it, or components of it. That is the way, and we've been doing this for more than a decade under federal. We added all the state at-risk criteria that was included in the legislation to make sure that we collect all of that on the local consolidated plan. And that is how we identify and then approve every evidence-based best practice that, and we do that personally for all 286 school districts. And this is just an example of one of them. I didn't want to, it was too small to try and put up here. It was too small to try and put up here, so that is what you will find on the local consolidated plan. On our website, you have a printed copy to take home and put on your refrigerator, but I'm going to actually just take you out to it if this works. So this is our website as how we use as a tool to identify these best practices. We start out with what the... Not only the statute says, but also how it aligns to ESAA, because again, we're talking about the same kids. How the state board identifies what our criteria for a student to be at risk. We give them a link to our guidelines. We have... And this is not just a bulleted list of programs. We also give them guidelines on how do I go about doing a good needs assessment to even know what it is, what strategy or intervention I want. Part of the new legislation that was added in 2019 is we had to add state-based nonprofit organizations. Now, they didn't define what a state-based national nonprofit was, so we just took the three groups that they put in legislation, and that is Jobs for America's Graduate, Communities and Schools, Boys and Girls Club. It's not limited. If a school district was working with a state-based nonprofit that's not on our list, they can submit it, and as long as there's evidence-based, that's how we approve it. We also give a lot of different legal resources to make sure that they know that they're in compliance with the statute, compliant with ESAA. We give them a lot of general resources. For example, the What Works Clearinghouse. If you go to that site, you can search evidence-based best practices, whether it's by literacy, mathematics, behavioral, not on track to graduate, and it's all there. But it's never comprehensive. For example, you won't see Jobs for America graduates on the What Works Clearinghouse. But if a school district submits that they're using it, and we know it has evidence-based practices, and there's research behind it, we approve it. That's how we go about officially approving them.
Brad?
Yes?
Are these hot links so that they'll click and go directly to that?
Yes, let me try it. So What Works Clearinghouse, if I click on that. Now, the What Works Clearinghouse is a component of the U.S. Department of Ed, and it's the Institute for Educational Statistics under the U.S. Department of Ed that has a lot of researchers, that that's all they do is they run studies on programs and practices. So once I'm on here, and I want to look at mathematics, or science, or English learners, or behavior, I can click on any of these. Literacy, I'll just click on that, and there you go. There's all the ones that... And if you click on each one, it'll tell you about the program, it'll tell you what research supported it. So when we bring this to you to approve, what you're really approving is how we go about identifying those evidence-based best practices. But our formal way of approving is approving their local consolidated plan. And if it's not, if we can't find it out here, then they have to support us other research, and that's how we go about approving evidence-based practices. Yes?
Thank you. So if the three national nonprofits, do they have to show us that what they're doing is evidence-based best practices, or can they just do whatever they do?
No, they have to show, and they... And those three do have research to support it.
Okay.
So if you go on their website, it will... You can find... What we don't have, and I was asked this question yesterday at the post-audit, how many people would it take for this agency to do all the research? I don't have an answer to that, but the... But I don't believe the law says we have to when we already know that there are national researchers that do it on every state's behalf. So it's already... But if I go back, it's not just What Works Clearinghouse. You can also Florida Center for Reading Research. I mean, we try to identify anybody out there that has done this kind of research, and we lead our school districts, and this is how we help identify and guide school districts to these evidence-based practices. I want to share... I'm just going to reduce this in case we want to go back to it. Here's what we continue to try and improve on. On our website, we will start working on categorizing based on... On the left side, we kind of group the criteria that the state board has approved as at-risk, and then we will start populating, pulling from those different What Works Clearinghouse in more organized to where if I need, they're not meeting requirements necessary for graduation. There's a difference between an intervention, a program, a practice, so we will start populating those. Just, they're all out there on our resources. We're going to just try and better organize it to make it more user-friendly for our schools to navigate, and this is just an example of the framework we're looking at. But we will start taking has repeated suspensions, expulsions. We're going to try and pull those in into a more easier way to navigate for them to be able to identify.
So Brad, this resource, it won't identify new things because of the new thing... These things that they're identifying are already in the What Works Clearinghouse or the Florida whatever. But what you're doing is looking at the at-risk criteria, and then you're populating it, that this fits this particular category?
Correct. Similar to how the... Let me see if I can pull this back. Similar to how the What Works Clearinghouse does it, based on content and category, we're going to try on our website, try to start categorizing it a little easier for school districts to navigate based on the state's at-risk criteria. So they have two ways to look at it. They can either go right to math, or if a student has been retained, what are some ones that align? So we're just going to... We're always trying to help improve ways for school districts to navigate best practices that align to what their needs assessment says they need to work on.
So in essence, this is going to be another way to help provide guidance?
Just guidance on helping them after they do a local needs assessment, which we give guidance on how to do that. But when they start looking at practices, and we will update when there's new research or new programs come out, we will try. But the way we officially approve each one is when they submit it through their local consolidated plan, because it is always up to the school district, because one program may be very effective in Abilene, but it's not having the effects that they wanted in Humboldt. So it's up to the local district to choose what it is that they want, but we will ensure that there's evidence behind it. And we've done this for several years under ESAA. We just want to align it with how they use their state at-risk dollars.
It's really very difficult, the example that you gave there. It's really very difficult to say, okay, if these kids have reading problems, these five programs are the ones you choose from. And then you don't allow any latitude for, again, it's that local control, to select what will work best for their students versus a pre-populated, approved five programs that may not meet their needs and may not get results.
That is correct. We're giving them examples of programs that we know have evidence and research, but that research may have happened in New Jersey in a inner... You know, and that may not align to what their needs are in a rule, so we just try to give them multiple practices that we know have research behind them, but they may also have something that they've been doing that they can show on their local consolidated plans that they're getting the results they want. Now, they have to show that, and then we can approve that as well.
Thank you. Looking to see if there's any more questions. Just let me know.
And then just, I think my last slide is, again, the guidance that we work with school district, number one, through their local consolidated plan, but we also have annual trainings. We have our conferences on evidence-based practices, whether it's the summer leadership, whether it's the MTSS symposium, whether it's the annual conference. Our team goes out regionally to do trainings on even how to fill out the local consolidated plan. So there, we do a lot of trainings. We have handbooks that we annually provide trainings to school districts on how to select, how to implement, how to report. So the last thing that we believe not only is our current practice here at the agency, exactly what the statute, 725153, it also, we know it complies with ESAA, which is the same requirements, it's just two different pots of money. Questions?
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brad. There's a... The public has a common perception that we have good schools and not-so-good schools. Do you think that that's justified? I talked to a lot of different peoples, people from all walks of life, and I think that's a common perception. We have good schools and not-so-good schools. Would you characterize that as accurate?
I would characterize it as we have schools with a lot of challenges, and we have schools with not as much, but all of our schools can continue to get better.
Do you see any way that we could differentiate our truly great teachers from the mediocre teachers as with pay?
At a local level, yes. At a state level, no.
Okay, at a local level?
They could do that.
Is there anything we can do here to, I don't know, augment that or support that?
If that was a priority of this board, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Brad.
Other questions for Brad, board members?
Really?
Okay, Mr. Porter.
This is the elephant in the room. So I'm going to talk about LCP. What was their interpretation, you know?
You mean post-audit?
Yeah, whatever that was. Yeah.
So I will rely on the commissioner to let me know whether I'm being opinionated or whether I'm being... There is a fundamental...
I likely will be.
There is a fundamental disagreement with what the intent of the law is. But I think deeper than that, at-risk students are general ed students, period. And I think there is a perception that the law intended that at-risk students be a separate We have special needs students, but at-risk students receive the predominant support from regular ed teachers in a regular ed classroom setting, because the first finding was the majority of money, the over $400 million in state at-risk is going towards salaries. That is true, because you don't purchase summer school. You don't purchase after-school programs. You pay humans to deliver that evidence-based practice to a group of students. So the predominant share of at-risk dollars go to people's salaries in order... I gave this example. If I'm a teacher with 20 students and none of them are at-risk, I don't have to provide differentiated instruction. I don't have to provide tiered interventions. But as soon as 40% of those kids have at-risk needs, they're behind, and I'm a regular ed teacher, I now have to provide evidence-based practices, strategies, interventions, programs in a regular setting during a regular day. And that's where I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding or interpretation, because I think some people see the law as, well, that's a... You got to do this in an alternative setting. Well, research will tell you, you... Just because a kid is behind academically, or they have behavioral, creating an alternative program is not... It's the regular ed setting where the vast majority of these supports are taking place. There's also a misunderstanding that they say, well, they paid part of a PE teacher's salary. Yep. Because every teacher, whether it's a core teacher, or a PE teacher, or an elective teacher, are practicing behavioral support interventions regardless of what the content is. And I don't think that they just understand the world of what all educators, whether you're a core teacher, an elective teacher, that what they are providing that is research-based and evidence-based to get these kids with these risk criteria to have success in the general setting. And I think that was the heart of, I believe what they wanted was a bulleted list that you could select off of and purchase and put a kid in front of. And that's not how at-risk... There are some. You can purchase Lexia, iStation, and there's a cost to that, but it's a regular ed teacher that is working with that kid, using that tool or program. And so we provide guidance to school districts that you can only pay the percent of their salary based on the percent of students that they're working with. While they're also working with general ed or general non-at-risk kids, that portion of their salary is paid out of the general fund, but you can use at-risk dollars to support what that teacher's doing, but they have to be providing some evidence-based practice to those kids, and that's where we collect and approve those through their local consolidated plan. And I believe there was just a complete lack of knowledge of what it really looks like and what districts are doing, because I don't think they even looked at local consolidated plans.
Did they have some... Give you any indication about the magnitude of the bulleted list?
Well, the law doesn't say that this board has to create a bulleted list. They just say the state board shall identify and approve...
Yeah, I understand that. But if they wanted a bulleted list, did they give you, say, 10, 20? But if they wanted a budget, bulleted list, did they give you, say, 10, 20, 300?
No. They said, it's your job. And we said, okay, here's how you did your job.
And we're doing our job.
And we choose, and when I say we, and when I say KSDE, that means, because we work on the direction of this board, we believe the most effective way is to work one-on-one with all 283, and they have to submit to us, they have to show evidence, they have to show all of those things that you see, like what Wichita does, and then we provide comments, and that's how we meet the intent of the law by approving. We don't just go out and find, we don't just copy what's off What Works Clearinghouse and post it and say, you can only use something on this list. Now, many of the things they're using are on there. We just use that as a way to identify a lot, you know, evidence-based best practices, but we officially approve it based on what they submit. Because there will be things that they're using that they have research and evidence that it's meeting the needs of that population of students, and if they can, then we approve it. Now, we will continually try to update and refresh our website, and we're also working with our regional education lab out of the Marzano Rel to help us do that because they're researchers. And they're helping populate and pull it in, and we'll continue to try to improve our resources to help them identify. But the way we do it, they didn't understand, or they don't, they interpreted that, well, there's a list, and they can't spend money unless it's on that list. Well, that's one way to interpret it, but we don't believe that's the best way.
That would be real convenient for adults making those decisions, but it would certainly not be in the best interest of kids. If we're going to make decisions based on what's in the best interest of kids, let's continue to do what we're doing.
Jim McNeese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is pretty interesting. Having been part of at-risk programs, I'll take Avid, for instance. It's designed, it's specifically focused on those categories of students who are listed, who are identified in the listing of descriptors that would place them in at-risk. But not all of them would be in that. So the, part of the teacher's salary would be paid by, we would extract those students who aren't, don't fit any of those categories but are in Avid, and then we would only count the ones that met any of those criteria. And no one's going to argue that Avid's not a great program. But then there's other things that are part of Avid besides just instructional time. It's buying the whole program, which is pretty expensive. It's participating in the training of teachers that has to go on. So it's a multifaceted part. And so what's the argument? I just don't see what the issue is.
The issue is--
Are they arguing that there's something less than Avid that someone's doing? We don't tell every district they have used Avid, and I don't know how many actually do.
I think their argument is if we don't have Avid specifically listed on our website, then they can't use it.
Okay, that's what I thought you were leading to, but this is a local control issue, and unless we see something amiss in their decision at the local level, we're going to basically support their decision.
But their interpretation was not the process we use. They interpreted that if it's not on a list, they can't use it. And we tried to share with them, our list on our website is just to help identify what those are, but we approve them based on what they submit in their local consolidated plan. Identifying and approving are two different processes for us. They interpreted that Wichita, if they're using Avid, they're out of compliance with the law because we don't have it on our bulleted list.
So only a program like JAG. JAG is an approved program from the legislature. Is that right? They're getting direct funding?
It's listed.
It's, I mean--
We list it now because of 2019.
Yeah, they passed the funding directly for JAG.
Yes.
Okay. And that's what they want us to do with all of them?
Well, JAG is--
No, I'm not talking about JAG. I'm talking about identifying a program and putting dollars next to it.
Their interpretation is if this board doesn't put it on a list, they can't spend money on it.
That's the bottom line.
Bottom line. And we kept telling them, well, that's one way to interpret it, but we don't believe that was the intent. And the way that we interpret it is this board gets to decide how they identify and approve. And we identify through resources in our website, but we approve using their local consolidated plan. And we try to explain that, and it's like, you may interpret it different, but it's this body that gets to decide how they go about identifying and approving, and that's the way we've done it for over a decade. We just updated it to align with the new law, with the language, but it's the same process that districts submit to us. They have to show that it's evidence-based. Many times, they reference our research. But if it's not, if Avid's not on our list, JAG is not on the What Works Clearinghouse. But there's plenty of evidence to show, and as long as they support it, but now, schools aren't using state at-risk dollars for JAG.
No.
It's funded through different, but they might be using it for communities and schools or other things. That may not be on What Works Clearinghouse, but we did not interpret it that if it's not on the list, you can't spend it. We interpreted that you provide to us through the local consolidated plan, that's how we approve it.
Am I--
We don't approve a bulleted list. We update a list, but we approve what they submit to us.
So a follow-up question. The auditors have picked this out. Now, they don't audit us every year. They do, what do they call those, reviews every so many years? Randy, is that correct?
They can choose--
They can choose what they, I mean, did they choose to do this, or is it up--
The legislature sets up a schedule--
Yeah.
--for what they're going to review.
So they didn't just all of a sudden pick this out? They, it's--
It was on the schedule.
Okay, it's on the schedule.
Cash balances will be, I think, next, ELL, virtual schools. I'm trying to think what's coming up.
This has come up before, because we've been doing this for about 10, 12 years. This has been before, so now there's a new interpretation that's coming out. Is that correct? This is not, this is inconsistent with past--
Well, they passed a new law in 2018. It was written in 2017. Well, they passed it in 2017. It went into effect 2018, and they are auditing that new law.
Okay.
And our schools submitted, based on the new law, their local consolidated plan last summer on how they spent their money in the 17, 18 school year. No, the 18, 19 school year last year. And as soon as they submitted them, just like every other summer, our consultants start reviewing, looking for evidence-based practices, they comment back, so we just, but it was kind of the chicken and the egg, like, they were saying that they couldn't spend it until it was on our approved list. We're like, that's not how we operate.
And we don't have a list.
They operate and they submit to us how they're spending it, and we approve their expenditures, that it's evidence-based.
So that's the crust--
And they just fundamentally looked at it as a different process.
Yeah.
It's like, that's okay, but the statute said this board gets to set how you identify and approve.
So that's what they're disagreeing with?
My opinion. Because nowhere in the leg, in the post-audit report did they even mention how this board goes about doing it. It was that you're not doing it the way they thought.
They interpreted we should be doing it.
Yes.
Which was to have a list, check it twice, who's naughty, who's nice.
I shared that this, that is not the most effective way of ensuring that schools are using evidence, because again, it might work in some districts, but it might not be what another district needs.
That's certainly based on the diversity of districts that we have.
And what's interesting, the law says that schools have to spend it on educational programs based on best practices and personnel providing educational services. But yet, the vast majority of every program or intervention or service is provided by a staff member.
A teacher.
A teacher, an instructional support, a behavioral specialist, and when they say, well, 95% of the money went to pay salaries, and people are like, of regular ed teachers, and it's like, yeah, because these are regular ed students.
Who else was going to provide it?
Well, we also believe that they thought, and we used, that if half my kids are at risk, then they need to go somewhere else. A regular ed teacher is only going to teach the non-at-risk kids. So you're going to have to, what, hire?
That'd work.
Another, we would bankrupt the state, but there's no research that would say the best thing to do is create an alternative environment where these kids, but I just don't think they understood that it's regular ed teachers providing these interventions and practices to these students in their classrooms.
Okay, I think we're going to need to move on to the next topic. But Brad, thank you, and thanks for your work on this. I'm sure we'll continue to hear more, and you'll get back to us as this continues to evolve.
Yes. And thanks to, again, to Kathy and Ann for helping us go through all this.
Okay, the next item is going to be about receiving the report from the Special Education Transition Work Group. Jim, I believe that's you.
This report was given to us last month, and it's on our agenda to be received, and I believe the motion talks about doing that to CAC. Let me kind of re-emphasize some, some, there's, there is concern amongst the special education, some special education practitioners about this report, and I want to address some of Every time we do a task force, we try to, we've done this several times with mental health, with everything else, we try to involve many stakeholders. No matter how many stakeholders you put on it, somebody gets left off. I mean, and I'm going to analyze some of this, or use an analogy, some of it with the dyslexia task force, because it's actually sort of related in that, you know, the legislature puts 16 people on it, and there were several groups that were not represented, so we just added about six different people represented, and then as soon as that happened, other people said, I should have been there. And so the same thing happened too. So there were some people believed that they were not represented. This, however, is, I think, the exactly appropriate time to deal with transition, because transition is directly, in my view, related to our goals of individual plans of study. As we are planning the future, we need to make sure that we are planning the future for all students, especially those students with special needs. And we have three audiences in this. First of all, we started this process to try to prevent legislation that was very targeted and one-sided. So that's the reason we're there in the first place. And if we don't do something, we're probably going to be in that position again. We have advocates that are equally passionate as those advocates for dyslexia, and Michelle can tell you that they're, that those are very passionate people. And we have, we have advocates that are equally passionate here. We have educational institutions that are really doing a pretty good job in dealing with transition, and we have those that really need some help in making those decisions. The bottom line is, and this is, there are several, in this report, there are several bottom lines. First of all, that decisions about the future of students with disabilities need to be based on their needs and their abilities, not their disabilities. And one of the things that has sort of been the case in the past is, in many cases, the default was sheltered workshops. And that may or may not be appropriate, but it's certainly not appropriate, it's certainly not appropriate for all. And so we need to change that philosophy so that we're looking at students' needs and looking at what they can do. Another issue of contention is guardianship. And there's now a concept of shared decision-making, so that you don't, so when a student has the capabilities of making decisions for themselves, they need to be able to make those decisions for themselves. If they don't, it's not necessarily guardianship where you take all their rights away, but there's a shared guardian, there's a shared decision-making process, and we need to look at all of those. Guardianship that will be appropriate in some cases does not need to be the default, and that's another part of the process. And then there is a great deal of misconception about benefits and benefit planning, and we need more information available. And that's not necessarily school districts' responsibility, it's the responsibility, there are other agencies that are involved, and we're going to be making recommendations to other agencies. Benefit planners from other agencies need to be involved in the, in the process, from the Department of Labor, from the Department of Commerce. That's not our responsibility, but we need, but we're going to be making, the Transition Work Group is going to be making recommendations to them for that. At any rate, the recommendation is for this to be submitted to CAC. Now, I'm going to say some things about CAC, both historically and what I consider to be the case now. Whenever the dyslexia task force was established, both the commissioner and I recommended that instead of them making the law, that they send it to CAC. And the consistent discussion came back, CAC is where things go to die. And so, but we have, we have proactively done some things. Jim is our representative on CAC. That's happened relatively recently. The members of the disability community have been placed as consultants on CAC. We have invited legislators to be on CAC. So I consider this an opportunity to do a couple of things. First of all, to go, to submit this to CAC. Now, by the way, we're not approving the report, we're accepting the report, and send, and the recommendation is to send it to CAC. And now that we have changed the, this part of the structure of CAC, and I believe, if I'm not correct, Jim has been very unambiguous in his statements to them about their responsibility. And so I think this, first of all, gives the opportunity for those, some of those people that believe they've been left out of the process to participate in the process, and second, gives us the opportunity to raise the awareness and credibility of CAC. I would prefer for this to accept this and go on, but I believe that the recommendation to send it to CAC is, is the best recommendation with a pretty short timeline. But then I'm going to completely change the subject and say, we all have to be aware that we've got dyslexia, we've got, we've got bullying, we've got computer science, we're putting a whole bunch of stuff on schools, and we need to be aware of that, too. We're putting a whole bunch of stuff on schools and we need to be aware of that too. Which kind of defeats my, my position here, but I, this is very important. And I'm going to give you one example of, I saw, I saw the importance of looking at what people can do the other day, just by watching a person. I went to a pharmacy in a major city in Kansas. And the person that waited on me, I would guess would be late teens or early twenties. Severely physically impacted, had trouble walking. He, he communicated well, he had to get the prescription, he had to, to take care of the insurance, he had to do all of those sorts of things. If you look at him, you might think he was incapable of doing things, but he was certainly capable. And he may, and what impressed me the most was that he had adjusted and made compensation for his disability. For instance, to work the computer screen, which was up here, he couldn't raise his arms. So he reached down, grabbed his shirt collar, grabbed his shirt sleeve with his mouth, pulled his arm up and worked. Somebody had looked at his abilities, not his disability, and he was a productive member of the community performing a service that was extremely impressive. That needs to be what happens for every student in Kansas. And for that, I'm going to support the, I'm going to support the motion that's before us.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have questions or do we have a motion? Any questions of Jim? Steve?
Yeah, do I want to go out and stump on behalf of braiding? Is, read about braiding, is that bringing the other organizations into the process? Could you just give us an elevator speech on braiding, please, Jim?
Well, no, I can't because I'm not all that familiar with the term, but I do know that we are involved virtually every agency in the state. And we'll be, braiding is, braiding of funds, right? So I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not competent to answer that question.
Jim?
Madam Chair, I'd go ahead with, with the recommended motion, if you're ready for that.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay. It's moved that the Kansas State Board of Education send the report from the Special Education Transition Work Group to the Special Education Advisory Council, CAC, for further review and ask CAC to report back to the State Board with comments and suggestions no later than February 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Janet Wall, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Looks like a 10-0 to me. Thank you, Jim, thank you very much.
And thank you for your support. I believe this is a move in, a very positive move in the right direction.
Okay, the next item is item 15. And this is to review the definition of extraordinary enrollment growth, growth, excuse me, growth. And Dale is here to discuss this. And I believe, this is a receive item.
That's correct, ma'am. We're a little bit shook up. We just found out that we had a school bus in Kansas City, Kansas, driving down the street near J.C. Harmon High School and got hit with a bullet on the side. Nobody injured, but.
Did anybody in the bus?
Yeah, I had two, a teacher and a student, I believe it was.
I was her student.
Yeah, a student and a teacher, I believe. So anyway, that's, that's kind of touchy with us a little bit because we had a, remember some of you have been around a while, and one of our attorneys driving over near Swoop Parkway?
Yes.
Driving down the road, stray bullet. They finally, they found the person, unbelievable, about 10 years later, but got hit, stray bullet in the neck, I think it was, and hit the artery. And her child was with her. Okay, we'll run through this right quick. I just want to tell you, this bill, this law was passed in 1997. And what happened is a, a school district, a couple of them, and mostly in the Johnson County area, they come in and made a case that there's extra cost associated with opening a new school. And particularly if you're growing in enrollment. And it was all tied to growing enrollment. The legislature, in all honesty, tried to define it, they got confused, they got messed up, and they said, you do it. So the State Board has defined it and it's been in place since that time. And it's no state aid involved, it's property tax. And if you ever approve a change in it, they act, that just gives them permission to go to the Board of Tax Appeals. And the Board of Tax Appeals will decide the amount and so forth, and then they, because it, it's all property tax. And it's the local board and then the Board of Tax Appeals if they meet the criteria. Right quickly, the definition of extraordinary growth, that's, that's the issue. And right now, that definition is listed right there. Three-year average is 6%. Increased 5000 or more students in the past three years, or at least 750 more students over three of the last six years. And we have a very unusual, unique situation. And let's go to the next one. And again, it goes to the Board of Tax Appeals and they'll, they'll have a hearing and they'll have to decide it, whether, how much they want to authorize. No state aid involved. Okay. The amount that, then, it's interesting, once you approve this, and this is in the law, you get it for two years. And then it decreases down by a percentage set out in the law. And that percentage, I think, is showing you, we show you an example here. And we gave you an example of a million dollars that was approved. You get a million dollars for two years and then it drops down. In year three, it drops to 90%, then 75, then 60, 45, 30, and 50. It goes away gradually. The legislature did that because they didn't want a sudden drop and what the effect that might have. And that's, so that's the way it works. Right now, you might find this interesting, four districts has all utilized it. Only four. And half of that, half of that, those four is in one district. And that's a rapidly growing district traditionally, and that's been all eight. They're, they've been, used to be Blue Valley led the pack and now probably at Spring Hill percentage-wise is leading the pack on the growth. We have also growth in Andover and down in that area, Goddard. They're in the district, and we talked about this last month, the district that asked us to call this to our attention or to your attention was Blue Valley. And they have very, small enrollment growth in the district, but they have a lot of enrollment growth in a certain part, down the corner. And Michelle might tell you more about that. It's right down in a corner of the district and between them and Spring Hill, I believe. Is that fair? And so they, they also, okay, concurred that if we did this, it's got to be a difficult, challenging thing. And they have to be at least 100% capacity and a projected enrollment of 130% in the, and it has to be done by a rationalized, research-based study. So, and you can't wait until you get 130% and then build a building because that's two more years. So the idea, and they made that case very well before the legislature. Well, you're going to build a building because of growth in enrollment, you got to, it'd be at least two to three years in advance. And so, anyway, that's what it is. And what the, one option would be is what's before you right now. And it's, it's pretty straightforward, is whether or not the board wants to amend this. And it, and in my opinion, it won't be used for two years.
Dale, pardon my ignorance, can, can a school operate beyond 100% capacity legally?
Yes.
And is there?
Yeah, now, I say yes, Steve. You got to be careful because you got to meet the requirements of the fire marshal. So there may be, but you can, you, there's districts in this, that are over 100%, but if you get, you're not following the fire marshal, you got some piece, you're not following the fire marshal, they'll say, no, no, no. They'll usually come visit you first. Ready, had this visit yet? They'll come visit you and they'll give you a warning. They say, you need to get that solved. And they'll give you time to solve it.
But they'll, but they'll be back.
They'll give you time to solve it, but then, but you, you don't want to be, if something comes up in violating the state fire marshal. So that, that's where the issue comes.
There's no magic number, like you can't be over 110% or anything like that?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Dale, let me clarify this. There would be no state tax money. There is no state tax money that has to do with extraordinary enrollment growth.
You are correct.
So, but what it does, if a district meets one of, right now, there's three criteria. If they meet that, then they can go to the State Board of Tax Authority or whatever that's called.
State Board of Tax Appeals, that's correct.
So they go to that, and if they get approval there, then that local school district increases the property tax within their own district.
Well, yeah, it'll have that effect because they may reduce something else to do this with me. There's a lot of things they can do on that, but the bottom line, it would give them permission to go to the Board of Tax Appeals to make their case. And if, without that, this district probably will not go. They won't, because they don't meet the other three criteria.
So.
But they still going to have to build a building.
So this would add a fourth option as far as extraordinary enrollment growth.
Right. And if you approve that, probably the spring of, what did we say, 20?
2020.
22? Spring of '22 before they could go.
Okay, we have a question. Ben Jones?
Yeah, my question is, it's mainly just my non-familiarity with the area. Is there a distance issue or, because usually when this happens, you just redraw district boundary lines, but are all they, I just don't know the area very well and this is, because I mean, in my, because in my area, that's what you do. If you have a school that's towards capacity, you have schools with openings, you redraw the boundary lines.
We brought that up. And Michelle, you want to tell them, they, they, they've, they've looked at that. Their other schools are distance away or they're full. And they're growing, but yeah, 100, 150 a year.
My okay, wasn't it a elementary, wasn't it going to be a specific, it was either going to be sec, it was going to be a middle school or an elementary school, wasn't it?
Elementary school.
Because.
This would be an elementary school and the one they got, they, we said, you know, we got to make, you can't just, everybody do this. And so they'll have to prove they're going to be at least 130% of capacity, but there's a lot of construction in that area. And it's a fairly nice area, is that fair?
Yeah.
And fairly nice area and, and they're building pretty rapidly. And it's right close to Spring Hill District and the people who live there, they, good, bad, right or wrong, they want to go to Blue Valley and that's, a lot of times in those areas, you build a house based on where you want your kids to go to school. And so that's what's happening.
And will this pretty much just apply to this one instance?
No, it could apply, no, statewide. It applies statewide. You don't have very many like this. You know, it's possible, there could be something come up down the road and, oh, Goddard or Derby or someplace like that, but we only got four districts utilizing it now.
Ann Mall?
That's what I wondered too, if we have any idea of the total that might.
Well, this, this has been on the books since 1997. I think the maximum we ever had was what, six or seven? I think we had six or seven one time.
But adding this fourth one wouldn't jump it up.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Be minor, insignificant. I'd be surprised if we get back up in the near future where we were at one time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? This will come back for action next month, so this was just received for today. Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, very kind.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to board reports. Does anybody need a break? Okay, we'll move forward then. We, first of all, under committee reports, we're going to talk about the legislative liaisons. Jim and Deena, I believe, have met with some groups about legislative priorities. Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
As you all know, we adopted, well, by consensus legislative agenda at the last meeting. And the next day, Deena and I met with a group of what, probably a dozen or more lobbyists, educational lobbyists, educational advocates, and really had a very, very positive meeting. One of the, but I'm going to skip to the end of that meeting because at the end of that meeting, we, we discussed Public Education Week, which is, I think, the 24th to the 28th or something like that of, of February. And what's going to happen, the, the group has, has asked the governor and both the House and Senate to pass resolutions in support of Public Education Week, and they have asked us to do the same. The work has already been done at the governors and the, and the House and Senate, so that's in the process. And so for a future agenda item, I'd like to, to add that to that. But on the 26th of February, which is the Wednesday of that week, they have asked us to make arrangements for perhaps some redesigned schools to come and actually have presentation, booths in the rotunda. They've reserved the rotunda. I mentioned that briefly to, to Tammy, but I wanted to, before I pursued that any further, I wanted to, to present, to at least tell you what we were doing. Because they've reserved the rotunda for that day and would like for some, for legislators to be able to see some of the things that are going on in our schools in the state.
Is that a date the legislators gave you?
That's the date that, well, the.
I was just thinking that was the week they were like on the floor right before Drop Dead, but.
That's, that's the date that, well, actually, the people from KASB made the arrangements with the legislature and that's the date they gave them, yeah.
Okay, sometimes they give you dates when nobody's there, so we'll have to check.
Well, we can check into that, but that's, that's, I, I've just told you all I know, Okay, another thing that happened during this meeting is that they made, you know, we, we presented the legislative agenda that we had passed, not that we had passed, that we had agreed on by consensus. And that they had some suggestions. But first of all, I want to bring you up to date on about four, four things that are on our list. Our first thing was support the recommendations of the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia. The Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia now has an annual meeting and it was yesterday. And at that meeting, one of, one of the recommendations was to have a statewide coordinator by, you know, from, from this department on dyslexia. And the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia, the motion was made to ask the legislature to provide funding for that additional person. And it was, again, passed unanimously. So that's going to be part of the recommendation. And last year, there was a bill introduced that I think got out of committee but never off, never into the other house, to provide professional development for, for dyslexia. And so that bill is going to be introduced again. So that's where, that's where we are based on yesterday's session. The third bullet, support the ongoing work of the recommendations of the task force on bullying, they, we just saw that, there's a lot of stuff there. Number down further, about the fifth one down, supports the passage of Tobacco 21 legislation plus bans on flavoring for electronic nicotine devices and marketing such products to youth. And, you know, Ann, you talked about this when they were, they were making that presentation. That's one of the things, there were some lobbyists there that had been working with them and they've found out that whenever you couple things together, in some places it scuttles it. So they, so, and, and so I assured them that, that we would not, that, you know, we can't look like we're fighting each other on this issue, that, you know, if they presented a bill that was just 21, we would, based on this, we would support that. If they decouple it, we'll support it, but we will not work against them. You know, we won't testify at a T21 hearing, okay, we would like for you to add this to it. We won't, you know, do that. We'll try to work with the other advocates so that we're all working from the same page so that we can get something done as opposed to get, get in the way. And then the next one, and this is the last, the last one of these I'm going to talk about, school bus stoparm violations. That bill has been written and it is unacceptable the way it's written because. That bill has been written, and it is unacceptable, the way it's written, because it puts all the responsibility for collecting the fines, assessing the fines, and collecting the fines on the school district. And it is, it puts the school district in the position of being the, being the law enforcement, and that's not more what the school districts are trained to do. So that's sort of a, you know, we still support the concept. That is not, by the way, the recommendation of the Stoparm Committee. It was completely different. The law, the bill that came out, the proposed legislation that came out was, that part of it was completely different from what was, and so that's already, I understand, that's already being worked on. And the person that was going to sponsor that will not sponsor the legislation that way. So that's probably, that particular part of the bill is dead, and will probably be done again. Now, if you'll turn, turn it over, turn that page over on the backside, or the recommendations, and this is what we need to decide whether or not to add these to our legislative agenda. During the, he said, during the 14th meeting, to discuss draft legislation with the education, oh, you can read it. So I'll just go over them, and we'll discuss each one of these, and to see whether or not we want to add this to our legislative agenda. Supports continued coordination and investment in career and technical education programs that align to workforce needs. This would be consistent, by the way, with the work of the Governor's Council. Comments? Looks, that appears to be positive. Supports opportunities to expand early childhood kindergarten and kindergarten readiness. I'm going to make sort of a decision here, and, and I think we need to be pretty, pretty uniform in our discussion. And I see some heads shaking no. So I think we need to be pretty uniform in our, before we say that the board says this. I mean, yeah, I think we have a majority, but...
And in the expansion, are you talking about public schools expanding their preschool, or holding to what the strategic plan is?
I don't know that we discussed that specifically. These are recommendations that other advocates...
Yeah.
...made for us.
I know. If, if, if they're pushing for an expansion of public schools offering pre-K, I mean, uniform across the state, I mean, when there's, when there's a daycare desert, yeah, I get it. But, like, I've got communities that I have school districts that don't have the pre-K because they have a robust private system that their kids have access to. And so I, I, and I think that the task for, the, the roadshow kind of backed that opinion up, that utilize the system that you have. So I would be more in line to what the strategic plan comes from, from Melissa Walker and Amanda Peterson, that roadshow, than, than purely advocating for public schools providing it in every community.
Jim, is the word expand the issue?
I think that's the intent.
Or should we say four?
Yeah. What is the issue, for those of you that don't agree?
Like, nearly yearly, they've added some more money so that early, so that early childhood could, for at-risk kids, they'd add a few more spots across the state. And so I...
I thought that's what they were talking about.
I think that's kind of what they've got in mind.
Okay. I'm, I can, I can support that. I just, I don't...
But not if it...
But not putting out my daycare providers of business.
Not if it's local school districts is, although some of them have at-risk programs embedded, so...
Randy's going to speak a little bit tonight.
So the current finance formula includes two more years of increased funding for four-year-olds at risk through that formula. And so, yeah, that's going to continue to go up under the current law. It would have to take a change in the law to do away with it. So that's why I mentioned this morning, and Dale and Craig, they've got this pinned down even much better than I do. But at some point in the near future, there'll be enough funding flowing into that, we won't have to do slots. We can probably just say, if they arrive in Sterling Bend, and they qualify under the criteria, we'll fund them when we audit it. And we're getting very close to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with, I have no objections to that. I just, I, I don't want to take it that next level and eliminate private services.
It may also be, there are a number of public schools that are providing, like Coffeyville in my area, Sedan.
Oh, yeah. I bet school districts are doing it. I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
That are providing universal...
But I'm looking at Ellsworth, which doesn't, and they don't want to, because they have a robust private system, so...
And I don't see, you know, my, whatever the board wants to do is okay with me, but it's, it appears that, I don't know that we're ever wanting to do away with robust private systems. We just, as long as the meeting, they need the students.
I, I think that's what... I'd like to say something, because I know in my district, there was concern, in KCK particularly, when they started early childhood, that they were going to hurt the home, they have absolutely not hurt any of the early childhood programs, private at all. In fact, they have waiting lists still at KCK. So I just want, to me, that's what it is. We do not want to hurt those, but we certainly want to, we don't want waiting lists. And that's what we currently have.
It's just defining what expand means. And I'm, I, I support the at-risk expansion. I'm okay with, I have no objection to that, and I think it's a good thing. I really do. It's just, it was just, what does expand mean? And that was mainly what it was.
I would change...
You want a discussion, Jim? I just want to point that out.
Okay.
Four. I would change the word expand and force, supports opportunities for early childhood and kindergarten readiness.
Just supports opportunities.
For.
For.
Just strike to expand.
But I, out of your Kansas can vision, you said you wanted every child to arrive, you didn't care how it happened. Communities ought to decide that. This doesn't say expansion of public monies.
No.
It says expand opportunities to ensure that that occurs. That would be, I would guess, consistent with your, with your mission, your vision so far. I mean, I, because again, if you've got, I was in Cheney last night, and they're talking, their community's talking about, how will we do this? What private sector, what faith-based sector, what public sector should take? And that's what you've said from the very beginning. And I don't see that this does anything other than that.
No, because even, you know, programs like Tiny K, I mean, they go to private, public, whoever can provide it. It's not limited.
Is that like parents' teachers, Ann?
Pardon?
Is it like parents' teachers, what you just referenced?
Tiny K, and there's several of them out there that...
Is it like parents' teachers?
No.
No.
No. There, but there are several toddler-age programs that the state funds, and they, they put them out for bid, and anybody can get it, because it's not K-12. So there's a bunch of those out there, and they're, they are, you know, I don't know if they technically meant preschool, but, because they're pretty young.
As Randy said, we've never said that everything has to be public. And, and that has been consistent. Been consistent with that statement.
It's also possible for us to say, I mean, what I'm hearing, individuals say they're all right with at-risk. So we could clarify the early childhood is at-risk early childhood.
I just, I would...
Because that, that's essentially who it is.
I'm okay with it. It was just letting, maybe giving you guys feedback as to what I interpret that to be. And I think we're all in agreement as to what the interpretation is, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I just think, you know, if you look at this, expand opportunities. Okay? Doesn't say private, doesn't say at-risk, it's just opportunities. So it could be a variety of things, which is what we want. We want variety in our opportunities for our early childhood. So I have no problem with this.
And our kindergarten readiness is one of our key goals.
One of our five big ones. Yep.
Can you live with it? At least by consensus, right? Support following the state statute and funding 92% of excess costs of special education.
Is the money there this year? Is it a gradual?
No, no, the money is not there.
To me, it's hard not to support that. Is the money there? No. Will it be there? I don't know. But I certainly support that.
Well, we're just saying, this is what we, this is the law, we would like for you, and we've said, actually, we said the same thing in our budget request.
Yes, we did.
That we believe, that extra money is available. And we've said the same thing on the first page of this. When there was additional money, because enrollment was down, we asked that that be transferred. So, so this is not inconsistent with what we've already said. And are we going to get 92%? No. But may, may we, right now, I think, as Dale continually tells us, the seven and a half million that added is going to actually decrease the percentage instead of increase the percentage. So it just, I think that's a reasonable goal. And, okay there, buddy? One more. Oppose any reduction or modification to the recommended funding levels approved by the Kansas Supreme Court. Oppose any reduction or modification to the recommenda, recommended funding levels approved Well, I guess we'll go with it.
My complaint would be that the court shouldn't be involved in the first place. That would be my complaint. Just saying, they shouldn't be.
Thank you, Jim. Deana, Policy Committee, any update there?
Yes. We hope to, by the February meeting, have, have our, at least for the second day, to have a presentation ready for you. So it would be for introduction, and then the next month would be the approval. So...
So you want to do receive, or you want to have a discussion first in February?
Have what?
Do you want it to be as a receive item in February?
A receive.
Or a discussion item, and then we go?
No, it would be a receive.
Receive?
In February.
Okay.
And then we would discuss and approve, disapprove in...
In March.
In March.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Communications Committee, Jim, Ben?
Ben will have a report for you in January.
Okay, all right. We'll count on it.
It was an invite that you gave me, Jim. I just walked into it.
Okay, we've got a few individual reports in your folders, so please make sure that, you know, you take a look at those. Also, we had a couple of members who went to some out-of-state events, so, and I didn't tell them they were going to do this, but I've asked that, maybe, Jim McNeese, I know you went to the Education Commission of the States, and...
The ECS conference.
Sounds like there's some interesting stuff.
I have to tell you, I rode the plane, and I'd just gotten back from driving to and from Arizona. Next day, I'm on a plane going to Denver. I wasn't a happy camper. You know, darn, Randy didn't even bother to tell me this. Well, anyway, it was a great conference. Oh, they did a wonderful job. Issues that are pertinent and relevant, and I'm going to have a report to you. I'm sorry I didn't get it done. Christmas, and just got back the other day, you know? But yes, it was, it was very good. And I have to say, one of the things that I talked to Jeremy, and I don't remember Jeremy's last name right now, what, Jenny, what?
Anderson.
Anderson, yeah, right, Jeremy. And I talked to them, I would like them to come and do a presentation to the board about the resources and opportunities that they have to serve us. Because quite frankly, I was not aware of all the services that are available to us as board members. And their website has recently been updated, and I, if you want to get onto it, it's much more accessible and much more user-friendly. And it would be the first place to go, if I were, I would recommend to all of you. But we'll have a, a team of, they would be happy to come in the spring at some time to provide us an overview of the resources and advantages of ECS.
Hey, why don't you be sure that contact information goes to Peggy and...
Yes. And I'm, I'm offering that as a future agenda item.
Yep. That'd be great.
Thank you. It was really good. I don't want to just, it's almost five o'clock, we don't want to go through the issues. But I will have a written report and send it to you all. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be great. National Summit on Education Reform, I believe Steve and Jim Porter were there. Any updates, anything?
Well, I think the, the emphasis, we had some good presentations, and they gave some books. One of the books was called Dark Horse, which appeals to me a lot these days, the concept of a dark horse, very appealing book. The other one is the, the other one is The Coddling of the American Student, The Coddling of American, Coddling of America, something like that, and how, you know, we need to teach our kids to have grit and determination, and not be victims all the time. So I think that's a general push. And the push for choice was emphasized, it's, it's big with this group, the Foundation for Excellence in Education. And I would like to make that a future agenda item as well. One of my talking points from March of 17 is that, you know, rich folk have always had choice, the affluent have always had choice, poor folk don't have choice. And we need to give them some modicum of choice, even within, if it's only within the the public sphere. Thank you.
And I just want to talk about, very briefly, about two of the breakout sessions I went to, because they were very consistent with what we're talking about today. The first one I went to was on the computer science, and I went with the Chair of the House Education Committee from here, Steve Hubert, we were both there. And it kind of gave some, the, the things that we were talking about today, virtually every state's dealing with those issues. So we're, we're sort of in the same middle of everything else. And then the other one I went to, that I want to, of course, was on dyslexia. And we're ahead of some states, and we're behind some states. But that's also a national issue, and it's moving forward. And what we have identified as the science of reading is, we're, I, I left that session believing that we're on extremely solid grounds with our recommendations.
Thank you both. Okay, Board Attorney Report, Mark?
Monthly, I send out a summary of the activities for the previous month, and gives you the opportunity to see exactly what I'm doing. I provide detailed billing and ask questions. Typically, if they come up, they are encouraged to be asked during the board meeting while I'm here, and haven't gotten any of late. But I wanted to cover a couple of things that were described in there. I won't go into the specifics, but I think it's, it's important to kind of, because the board is the, serves as the local, like the local board for a school district, that the State Board serves as the board for the school for the deaf and the school for the blind. And so in that capacity, I provide legal assistance to the, both of the, of the schools in employment issues and anything else that comes up from time to time that might involve counsel. So I was just going to kind of talk about two of them. One, one is that many times, while there may not be direct legal action involving employees, where they have brought a claim against, against either of the schools, there might be, they might be either witnesses, or they might be asked to provide court testimony, you know, whether it's a student issue, a family issue, an IEP issue. And so an employee or administrator at either of the schools might get a subpoena. And since that's not the kind of thing they do day-to-day, it's kind of alarming, and sometimes you can even, we had a situation where one former employee at this, from the school for the blind, who had recently retired, got served... who had recently retired, got served with a subpoena at home, you know, and the sheriff normally does that service. So those kinds of things, although they, to people in the, in the legal profession are somewhat routine, getting served, you know, by somebody that's recently retired is, is kind of alarming. And so then I will work with them to assist in, in explaining the process, and then if there's documents that need to be provided or attendance at a hearing, things like that. And sometimes the, whether it's School for the Deaf, the School for the Blind is, is involved in, in a secondary capacity, while they may not be specifically a party to the litigation. For example, there's some pretty protracted and contentious litigation going on right now with Dodge City and a parent on behalf of a student that has brought a lawsuit against the school district, the cooperative that's involved. There was an appeal process for a due process hearing, and a number of employees were subpoenaed in order to appear, both some by, in person, where John Harding had to be in the Wichita area and a couple of other employees directly to provide testimony at a, at a due process hearing. Others were set up to participate by conference call. And so those are the kind of things that, that while they are not necessarily a party, they have been compelled by some process to provide documents and records pursuant to a subpoena. They were compelled to, you know, provide testimony related to that ongoing litigation because they had provided some, some assessment and services to a student. And in fact, that case has been recent, I just was kind of searching the federal court records, and that case has gone now to the Kansas Federal Court. And so it's, it's continuing to, to go forward. The family had an attorney on the first case, and now they're representing themselves on the second case. And so it just kind of continues to go along, and it's been, it's been time-consuming and, and kind of a distraction to the normal day-to-day things that the, that the administrators and the teachers do. But, you know, we make sure that we cooperate when required to do so. So sometimes you'll see some work that I'm doing with, with either school in a variety of ways like that. There are also times when employees will be directly involved. They'll be dismissed, or there might be some disciplinary action that's, that's appealed. And one thing that's come up here, there's a, there's a pending action that you've seen described. And it caused me to reflect on the fact that really we haven't, while we've talked about in the last 10 years that I've been in this capacity, we talk a lot about the negotiations process for the school for the deaf. We haven't really talked about another segment of employees for the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind, and that would be employees that fall under the, that are, that are non-instructional employees, and that they, their due process rights arise under the Public Employee Relations Board. And they are represented collectively by KOSE, and that's KOSE with a K, the Kansas Organization of State Employees. I came on board in, in March of 2009, and based on some statutory changes that happened right around that time with the definition of, of the negotiated agreements, the employees, all of the employees were found to be covered by KOSE. And my predecessor had to go to the Labor Relations Board and remove instructional employees from the, the collective bargaining and the, and the representation by the Kansas Organization of State Employees. And so then there was a ruling that came out right about the same time I started in May of 2009, which said that those non, the instructional-related positions were not aligned with the collective bargaining units of, that are under the Public Employee Relations Board, and they don't fall under the Kansas Public Employer Employee Relations Act. So those are a couple of statutes that apply to non-instructional employees. And so we have, from time to time, if somebody challenges a decision that's made by the administration at either of the schools, they have certain appeal, appeal rights to challenge that, those decisions. And that would go to the Office of Administrative Hearings. So for example, we have one employee who was a cook at one of the schools. He was dismissed, and he has the right, under the statutes that apply, and the collective bargaining, not just for the employees at both of these schools, but because they fall within the overall collective bargaining agreement or agreement that was negotiated on behalf of the Kansas Organization of State Employees, KOSE, K-O-S-E, then they can take those, those appeals to the Office of Administrative Hearings. And the, and there's a process where you have a mini-hearing in front of a administrative law judge. So one of the schools asked that I assist in that process because they haven't had that come up in, in 10 years, where we've had somebody that's, that's appealed a disciplinary decision, and then that, that employee has now hired legal counsel, and so it'll be, there'll be a little bit of time involved there. As, on the other side, as we, we've talked about from time to time, the, you know, the, the state board monitors the negotiations process with the School for the Deaf, and the, the employees are represented by the KNEA there. And then we go through, typically it's a one-to-three-year type agreement. And the date upon which the either party provides notice of intent to negotiate by statute is March 31st. So, you know, in January, we'll probably have to start zeroing in on, on those issues at the, at the School for the Deaf. I also wanted to elaborate then, switching topics, share with you, because there were some questions about this, all the litigation that is arising related to Juul and the smoking. There was, I did a little bit of quick research on that to share the details of the, of how those lawsuits are being filed. They are being filed by a consortium of law firms. A lot of times, these things come up, if they're the new, kind of the new battleground for plaintiff's firms and, and whether it's, in this case, members of the Kansas Trial Lawyers are involved in various networks and bring different products liability and all kinds of claims, and they partner. There's a local firm, there's two Kansas City firms that are, are, thank you. There are two Kansas City firms, a Goza and Honold Firm in Overland Park, and the Wagstaff and Cartmel is a Kansas City-based firm. They do a lot of plaintiffs collective, or class action-type work. There's a New York law firm and a Montgomery, Alabama firm. And they are using a format that it, for all the schools that sign up as clients, they're using a pretty much of a standard engagement letter. If you, if you dig within the newspaper articles, they usually provide a link to the board decision. So, you know, it seems like every, every day you read about, whether it's Lawrence or Alatha, or, you know, before long, all of the schools, my prediction is every one of them will have signed an agreement that says, you know, you represent our interest. And so whether that turns into individual lawsuits, or whether that's a giant class action, I'm not sure where they plan to go with that. But essentially, they sign an engagement letter that, that provides that these law firms will represent the school districts in their claims against Juul and their related companies for the costs that the school districts incur for providing nicotine detection devices and all, any expense, any direct expense that the, that the school district incurred as a result of it. And the kinds of claims that they bring are, are similar to what, you know, you'd see in, in the lawsuits that have been going on against tobacco, giant tobacco for years, which is, you know, the deception, the targeting of minors, the, the marketing efforts and the concealment. So the points that might be of interest in terms of what does this mean for school districts? So there are a contingent fee case, so plaintiffs, many plaintiffs-type claims, which don't, if there's not a statute that provides for the recovery of attorney's fees, then firms take on this work on a contingent fee basis. And so it's a third of any recovery goes to the lawyers. And so that's a pretty standard in the industry on personal injury, you know, or other plaintiffs-oriented cases. And so all of these local school districts who are signing engagement letters to be part of this mass tort litigation against the, the electronic delivery device companies are charging a contingent fee. Under that contingent fee arrangement, if there's no recovery, there's no lawyer's fees which are due to the firms. So you could say there's no risk, you know, in, in that situation. That's different than in the years where there's been school finance litigation, and schools have paid into the fund to compensate the lawyers. So the plaintiffs, which will be the law, which would be the school districts in these cases, are the plaintiff, and they would be suing the target defendants. They would get two-thirds of any financial recovery. The unique thing is, is that in plaintiffs' work, you have to, the client has to be responsible for expenses. And particularly in personal injury or medical malpractice-type cases, hiring of experts is hugely expensive because you have to get, you know, you have to get doctors and experts across the country that charge $500, $600, $700 an hour. And so most contingent fee cases, whether it's personal injury, you know, the client is responsible for any case expenses, whether that's expert deposition, things like that. But looking at those fee agreements today, they have an interesting provision that says that the client, this, the, the general rule is that the client pays all case expenses, except they have a provision in there that says no expectation to pay any expenses unless the client recovers money. So it's a pretty unusual, and, and I guess the point, the reason I point that out is you could, you, you could say, well, what's in it for the school districts? Obviously, to bring awareness, bring change, bring possible compensation, to hold those accountable. And that, but there's really no downside risk for any school district to sign up because they're not having to pay hourly fees or any attorney's fees, and they are held harmless if there's no financial recovery. Then they're not going to have to pay the litigation expenses. So prediction is, is that you're going to see this, not just in the state of Kansas, but all across the country because you see a lot of large school districts entering into the same kinds of arrangements all over. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Okay, we've had a couple requests for future agenda items already. Are there any more? Ann?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we already have on our list the change in qualified admission and what we might do about that, an in-depth discussion? Is there a month set for that? Okay, is it coming up soon?
Depends on your definition, I think we said February, we were looking at February.
Okay.
That's pretty soon.
How about the you can teach thing? Find out more about what's going on with that.
We, we don't, don't have that queued up. That's, we'd have to talk about that. It's not something we oversee.
I know, but it's, I foresee it as a loss of STEM teachers, and we can't really afford that. I don't know.
You can put it on there.
Thank you.
Steve?
On the subject of STEM, when the legislature gave us a STEM license, I don't think they anticipated that the education folks would say, well, you got to get the job offer first before we can give the license. And so I'd like to revisit that. That's my understanding of how it would work. And then when I retire from politics, which will probably be August 5th, you know, I'll go about the business of getting a job offer so I can get the STEM license. But, you know, I figured out how to do what I love to do without your blessing, and I'm, I'm worried more about the folks who are just sort of turned away by the whole system because we promised that there's a STEM license, but you got to go get a job offer first. And most schools will tell you, you have to have a license to apply. So I think we're dealing with a catch-22 here.
Other items? Okay, all right, thank you. A couple things on the Chairman's Report. Several of us attended the KASB conference over the weekend and did the panel. It was pretty well-attended. We were kind of a small room, but it had pretty good attendance. We talked about some kind of major topics. Jim talked a little bit about dyslexia and transitions. We talked about the Suicide Toolkit. They were interested, and I happened to have one that I passed around, and then somebody asked me at the end for it, so I gave that away. So if there's a spare one around, Peggy, I replenish my supply. And then we talked about a couple other things, and then we opened it up to questions. So had a nice, nice showing, good group of people that were interested, a combination of superintendents and board, board members, actually. There was both there. So thanks to everybody that was able to come. K-Toy banquet, that was a treat as usual, just a wonderful event down at the Marriott down in Wichita, and then brand-new, brand-new K-Toy team. When will they be coming? In February, is that about when they usually come?
I think that's right, yeah.
Sounds about right.
Legislature in January and February.
Yeah, so they'll be coming to see us before long. I think they do that, same time they go over and talk to the legislature, if I remember correctly. So, but they'll be over to see us sometime before long, so we're excited about our new team, and I'm sure they're going to do some great things out there. They were an energetic bunch, that's for sure. So that was a lot of fun. Teacher Retention Summit a couple weeks ago in Manhattan on a Monday of Thanksgiving. Had a gentleman there from K-State. Is that where that guy was from? Presented some very interesting data. I thought that was real good. I don't know if we'd want to have that sometime at the board meeting. It was, I thought he was good. Had some good speakers, of course Randy spoke. Always good to have the commissioner there. And several good sessions, anything on that? Anybody wants to share? Several of you were there.
Yeah, that made that presentation on working with, with what was on workforce.
Yeah, the, she works with, and she actually presented to the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee and talked about the, how they're working with their local workforces, which is a kind of an interesting concept when they look at education. You don't think of that, but I think more and more people are starting to talk about education as having an impact on the economy and, which it does. I mean, if you look at a lot of towns, even in, even in Wichita right now, it's about the fifth-largest employer, probably. 259 is. And it varies depending on, right now, text on.
The surrounding area.
Yeah, texter on just announced some layoffs, so they might bump up a little bit. But, and a number of your communities, the school district would be the largest employer.
It is.
So, yeah, so they, we do have an economic driver as far as those folks are involved in the education. That's not just teachers, but all the employees. Governor's Education Council will be Thursday. So Jim, you want to add anything on that?
And the group, the committee that I'm on deals with competitive edge, and we're looking at things like high-wage, high-demand jobs. And then we also add a critical need for that, and we're trying to define that because critical needs are things like, that are not necessarily, they're high-demand, but not necessarily high-wage, for which we need them. And that would be entry-level healthcare workers, paraprofessionals, things that are.
Preschool teachers?
Yeah, pre, yeah, you know, those preschool, especially non-public, that, that are really important for our, for, for our kids. But are not necessarily, so we're having a discussion on how to deal with critical needs that are not high-wage, but high-demand.
So that meeting will be Thursday, so we'll have a report for you probably in January from that. The next meeting is on January 14th and 15th. The next meeting is on January 14th and 15th. And we've got a couple of extra things I just want to make sure you know about. Actually, you know how Dr. Mary Skaggs usually brings a group of student teachers from Baker? Well, Peggy, thank you to Peggy and thank you to KNEA, they were going to sponsor those student teachers for lunch with the board. You know, we always like to talk to the students and hear some things. So we'll probably come up with some, kind of some questions to ask them and stuff. So kind of plan on that that day we'll have a lunch opportunity with those students. That will be on Tuesday, on the 14th. Yeah, and we do. And then we have our annual SEAC breakfast on Wednesday. And there's an invitation in your packet there. And then Wednesday at noon, there's like two options. There's the lunch and the roundtable with the students because the CTSOs will be here that day, or on Wednesday. And then so we will go eat with them, but there's also the Superintendent of the Year recognition that's also at noon. So there's a couple of opportunities that day for luncheons. So everybody will get an opportunity to go, go join a luncheon that year, that particular day. So a lot of things coming up. Pardon me?
Let me know the RSVPs. I think the deadlines for the Citizenship Day is December 17th and I don't know the deadline for the Superintendent of the Year, but I'll get you registered if you let me know.
Okay. So, and there are a lot of things going on at that particular meeting that day. We have several action items and some new information. Okay, we'll move along.
State of the state? Yes. Any idea?
Do we know? Is there a state of the state off-year?
Yes.
So we don't know when yet. We'll find that out and let you know, because that's always in January. Okay, we have a, we need to do consent. So that's item 17. So I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jim McNeese, a second. Ben Jones, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, looks like 10-0. Okay, we are recessed and, well, wait a minute, I got travel to do. Okey-dokey. I was recessing this early. So if you'd look at your travel and is there any additional ones? Yes, Ben?
I'm going to send this in an email to you, Peggy, after I send it. Because of all the personal things that have been going on, I did not get a chance to sit down and write it down. But on December 12th, this is all mileage-only, visit to Cunningham. On December 17th, visits to Center and Rural Vista Schools. And then December 18th, Marion and Peabody Burns visit. And that will leave me four more districts to visit and then I will visit all 39 of my school districts in my first year, so.
Good for you.
So I will achieve that goal and I'm really proud of it and I'm not doing it again. Yep, I'm hitting send right now.
Okay, other, Jim?
December 12th, spend the day at Tuwanda. Mileage and pay. And then I'm going to be at the Broadband on December 17th. Mileage and pay. January 18th, Derby School District.
What was the date again?
January 8th.
Derby?
Derby. And January 16th, Clearwater Superintendent Meeting with Orion.
Okay, others? Jim Porter?
I don't know how we do this, but for the next four and a half months, there'll be numerous legislative, I don't know what they are, you know, but, because we don't, sometimes you, sometimes you get a 30-minute notice.
Okay, others? Okay, we take a motion to approve. Dina? Second by Michelle. All in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Now, we're recessed until tomorrow. Okay, so 9:00 AM tomorrow. See y'all then.